Twenty one general session meeting was selectmen. If you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Foundation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Mr. Priest, I believe you are up.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open being law, general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty. And the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the town of Burlington and border selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No person attendance of members while I'm sorry. No in person attendance of members of the of the public will be permitted. But the public can listen and or view this meeting while in progress as broadcast on B C A T government cable access television. B C A T government coverage Facebook live page. Or by using the link provided in the agenda for our web Xisco online meeting. Or via phone at four eight four one eight nine three eight eight. Meeting number one seven nine eight six one six three. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so. During the portion of the hearing designated for public comment. By commenting on the B C A T government coverage Facebook live page. The chat function on the web X virtual meeting or via telephone seven eight one two seven zero one six three five.
Thank you, Nick. Gentlemen. Everybody in attendance, before we get started with this meeting tonight, before we go into our first discussion, I would like to take a moment of silence. A former selectman. I think this gentleman has held almost every position in the town of Burlington. He passed away January eleventh, just before our last meeting. His name is Bob Monarazzo. He was. He was a close personal friend of mine. He was a very, very big contributor to this town. And I would just like to take a moment of silence. And recognize him for everything he did for the town of Burlington. Some of you knew him, and I will get into that in a second, but I would like to take a moment in memory of Bob Monarazzo. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Mike, you know him. Would you like to say anything about Bob's passing?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Joe. Yeah, I've known Bobby. He's been a great friend of mine. He's been a great friend of my family. He was, you know, he loved this town. Like, like nobody else. He'd served a number of positions within town, housing authority. You mentioned border selectmen. I believe border health. I mean, there's very few positions that he didn't help hold here over the years, so. My condolences to Bob's family, and he'll certainly be missed.
Thank you, thank you. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, my condolences to the family as well, but Bob was just one of those guys. You knew who he was. You knew what he he knew how he he thought. He loved this town. He always went to bat for making sure residents got preference, whether it be hiring or housing. But he he was the one of the, you know, lifebloods of this town. He'll be sorely missed. Great guy.
Thank you, Jimmy. Nick, I don't know. Did you know Bob?
I didn't know Bob personally, no, but obviously my condolences go out to his family and you know, since it's never easy losing a loved one.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan. I see you're kind of all over the screen there. You're on mute. I don't know where you are. I see the bottom of your desk. Things are working good right now. It's awesome. All right. Listen, I can't say enough about the man. I absolutely love this guy. He was he would stop in the shop every day just to see how my dad was doing and how he was doing with global town issues. We do quite a bit together. He was I didn't realize how much I loved him until he was gone, and that's the saddest part in life is when you realize that. So I'm not going to go any further than that. We're just gonna move on. Bob. We were talking about Bob. Do you have anything, Mr. Monarazo? Do you have anything you'd like to add? You're on mute. Okay. I don't think Bob has anything to say right now. That's Web X, huh, Bob? Anyway, Paul, did you know Bob at all in any capacity up here?
I know, Joe. Obviously, I had I never had the opportunity to meet Mr. Monarazo, but I have heard his name frequently in the time I've been working here. So I know that he was a great contributor to the town over the years. And my condolences to his family as well.
Thank you. Okay, Paul, let's go right to the first thing, the cardboard dumpsters outside. I believe Mr. Sanchez is here also, so go ahead, Mr.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This first item was requested by the board to discuss the conditions that we're dealing with related to the cardboard recycling bins in the back of the town hall. We have John Sanchez here to answer any questions the board may have.
Mr. Sanchez.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm here to just answer any questions you may have regarding the the cardboard dumpsters. If you'd like to give a little bit of a background, or I can wait for the questions.
I think it would be best if you just went over a little background. I think actually you'll answer a couple of questions that I've heard so far. So if you can go over like when we started, and I know we only started with two, and now we're up to, I think there's four out there right now, so. If you could just go over it quickly.
So so what we've done, Mr. Chairman, is given access to a residence to have a place to dispose of the cardboard. As you know, every resident gets a recycling toter. And in order to make it easier for them when they get deliveries or things like that, they had larger box, because we thought that it will be a good thing that we can offer our residents to have. And we started with, I believe, one dumpster behind the town hall. We're up to four right now. And for the most part, the residents have been good about, you know, the upkeep of that and following the signs that we have posted as far as not leaving cardboard on the sides or even trash as we sometimes find. But obviously, with the pandemic, there has been a large increase in the in the use of Amazon and other delivery services. So people have a large amount of cardboard. And that has resulted on what you probably have seen in the in the back of the town hall, which is mountains of cardboard strung along the parking lot and in addition to actual trash that some residents have also left behind next to those dumpsters. And I believe that's why you wanted to have that conversation today.
Yes, thank you. From the emails that were received, I'm going to start with Mr. Priest. You seem to have a, we all had questions. I think you had a couple more, so. I'm going to let you start, Nick, and maybe some of those other questions will be answered at the same time.
Well, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The questions that I had mostly were answered by Mr. Sanchez. Email was or what makes the most sense. Hang on one second. Okay, so I had the the several questions that I had. The cardboard bins and
Nick, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. You keep fading in and out on my screen. So I don't know if that's your end, and I don't know if everybody else is dealing with the same thing right now. So see if you can fix that, and I'll just go to Mr. Hogan and see what questions he has. Okay? Bob? You're on mute, Bob?
Can you hear me? All right, I I was I've been concerned. I went up, I was up at the town hall when the the picture was taken, not at that moment, but during that timeframe, and I was really disenchanted with what was going on up there. And I suppose my question to John is, I mean, do we have a legitimate option short of just taking them down? You know, can we get an extra delivery? I I don't know, but it we can't, especially at Christmas or during the times when there's a lot more deliveries. It was just, it was just disheartening.
So so we've, we we're up to four dumpsters over there, which which I don't know how many more we could add. And actually stop people from littering, which is what is really happening. So one suggestion that I have, and I spoke with the police chief about this prior to this meeting, is to actually put some signage there next to the cardboard dumpsters about littering and and issue fines to the people who litter. I mean, because that's what we're talking about. We do see residents that come in and they see the dumpsters full, and then come back. I mean, we during the holidays, we were emptying those every day. So it's not for lack of trying that that they get filled up and I think some of you, when there's some of the comments were made, like, well, I'm not going to drive around with cardboard in my car. So I'm just going to dump it in the parking lot. You know, I I think, you know, actions should be taken, perhaps. Eliminating the dumpsters. I don't think there's a real solution to the problem. I mean, people do have a large amount of cardboard at home right now. So that will be my suggestion. And again, I I spoke to the police chief who was on board with that idea, but obviously we want to see what the board will decide tonight on what to do going forward.
You're on mute, Bob? Bob, you're still on mute.
One of those people who didn't dispose of it, and it I drove around with cardboard in my car for a couple of days until when I went back, I was able to dispose it properly, so. It can be done.
Absolutely. Bob, you all set?
I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Nick, go ahead. You're on mute.
How about now? Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, excellent. So, yeah, so like I was starting to say earlier, you know, Mr. Sanchez had answered a lot of the questions that I had for him via email. They were mostly surrounding, you know, just the general con to the to the community as it pertains to, you know, the D P W having to spend time to clean up. You know, the this the severe amount of littering you know, that that was taking place because people were felt felt too inconvenient to deal with the cardboard. And I can tell you firsthand, I know, you know, Bob said he went through it. You know, we're in the middle of a hefty home project that involving a lot of boxes that you're disposing of, and we have four little kids, and my wife went to go dump some cardboard the other day, and guess what? It was full. So we drove home with the cardboard in our minivan and unpacked it and waited until we could go back. You know, the convenience of the fact that they're there at all. You know, and if you have to, if you are mildly inconvenienced by the fact that there are no that there's no more space left, then that's, you know, a small price to pay really for having a space to dump it in the first place and not having to spend two hours cutting your boxes up with a utility knife and slowly putting them into your, you know, home receptacle. You know, I I am on board with, you know, you know, more signage and possible fines if if, you know, we need to go that route. You know, I I know, you know, Mr. Chairman, you and and Paul and John, you know, got my my quote unquote fired up email. You know, when when this whole thing started, because, you know, I mean, you know, talk about looking a gift horse in the mouth, right? I mean, let's, you know, say to ourselves, oh, look at this this great thing the town's doing for us, and let's just go ahead and, you know, kick ourselves while we're at it. You know, so I just wonder, you know, John, maybe we could also, in that signage, include when typical pickups are. So folks who are coming, say they show up on a Tuesday and it's full, but the sign says that, you know, pickups are typically every Thursday or every Tuesday and Thursday. They'll know roughly when to come back and when there's more likelihood of some free space to dump that. You know, for those people who aren't abusing it, right? Because my first inclination was just to shut it down, right? Just, you know, if people are going to abuse it, let's just get rid of it. But, you know, to all the folks who don't abuse it and to all the folks who, you know, drive home with their car, but it's not fair to them. You know, so why why poison the well because one person is is, you know, is using it incorrectly? So, you know, if we could do that, that'd be great. You know, and then I also heard, you know, that there's no way the there was a possibility of contractors dumping cardboard in there. Just all in all, I would I would welcome, you know, more stricter surveillance and and, you know, action taken on people who are using it inappropriately or, you know, I guess illegally. You know, my big thing is just is just mitigating, you know, having to not only you know, say to say to ourselves that, you know, people in our community can't take, you know, common sense and good action and be community, you know, oriented and take the cardboard home when it's full. You know, but also that, you know, they have to understand they're delaying our D P W staff from doing projects that they otherwise would have been tasked to do instead of spending two to four hours cleaning up a mess that shouldn't have been made in the first place. So I have no questions. I'm just, as I as I continue talking, I'm only firing myself up more. I'm happy to make a motion on this once everyone's done talking, but for now I'm going to shut up. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Mike, Jim. Jimmy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not so much quite. Well, I do kind of have a question, but I have some thoughts too, because I went up there the same time Bob did, and I saw the the mess that was there, and I took a picture as well. And of course, there's a lot of talk about it on on the residence page on Facebook. But I was thinking, maybe we could look at a couple of different solutions and, you know, one being going from the least intrusive to the most intrusive. There are signs there that say it's on camera, but we might want to think about with the way cameras are now and the cost, actually, you know, putting a really good camera there. It's a thought. And then I kind of had a couple of other thoughts. I'm glad John's here because it just bounces him off of off you. So one, just the camera would be one, you know, suggestion. Again, dead dumpsters and people are throwing trash in there, and it's not just the residents. It's people from out of town, too. So they they hear about it and they show up and they get rid of their trash or cardboard, whatever it may be. But it it hurts the residents. So I was thinking, you know, definitely, you know, think about the cameras as the the least intrusive. I was thinking a fence, you know, maybe fencing it in would be an option or and it would only be open certain times. And then the other thing I was thinking about was even moving it from the the town hall because it is in a residential neighborhood. John, I'm just throwing this out there, you know, maybe relocating it. And I'm not saying suggesting to do this. I'm just throwing this out there. Relocating it to the one of the two new D P W yards when it's when they're open, the dumpsters are open. When the D P W is not working, then they're closed. Just a few, you know, few thoughts to put it out there and to try to keep a good thing going and to keep people from abusing it. So I'm just throwing that out there. You know, from least to to worst intrusiveness and and to see where it goes.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
So Jim, placing the the cardboard dumpsters and behind town hall was deliberate. We wanted it to be on a on a place where actually we can keep an eye on it, and this is based on on my experience with working in all the communities. And what we used to find in other places where I have worked before, and we offer services like this, is that when they find the gate closed, they will leave everything by the gate. And there is and if it's in a remote place where there's nobody around, they'll leave even more stuff than we will see here. Even when we have police and fire that pump gas in this area, so at least we thought that being centrally located with this more activity, it will be least likely to have that type of behavior happen. So the the tune of buildings, I'll be afraid that, you know, on weekends when nobody's there. All I can imagine is how that will look like as compared to what it does here in the town hall. So as far as the cameras, it's something we can certainly utilize. And like I said, the police department will be on board to issue fines if need be, if this is the direction that the board likes to go. Because I think I think that's probably what we need, a little bit more enforcement to people who understand that littering is not, it's not right, you know, basically.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Does it have to strictly fall on the police, or can the border health or the building inspector issue fines as well with regards to this?
The the law that the police chief was referring to, I believe is enforceable by the police department. I'm trying to find this on the fly. I know I wrote it down. So I don't know if you can see that on this is Madam General Law, so you have to get the details of season force, but I believe it's enforceable by the police department. And yeah, I'll have to read the entire section, but we certainly can kind of apply that, and he, Mike, Kenny's the one who directed me to to actually this chapter of the law to to be able to make it enforceable.
Well, Mr. Chairman, one quick follow up and then I'll stop.
Right, sir.
John, whatever you need, I'll be more than happy to work with you on it. I just think that the status quo isn't working because if it was working, we wouldn't be talking about it. And so we need to do something at minimum, like I said, the cameras, good quality ones. We can't get, you know, cameras that don't get a license plate or something like that. If you're gonna, if you're gonna do some enforcement, you need the tools to do the enforcement. So I'll work with, you know, do whatever I have to do to help make sure this doesn't continue. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Runyon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Honestly, I think it's shameful that we even have to have this discussion on this. I know, you know, that it's really only, it's only a small fraction of people who are who are doing who are doing this. I like Nick's idea of posting the the days that they can expect the the receptacles to be emptied. I think that will I think that would go a long way in minimizing the trash that we have here. So I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. So from my gathering, Mr. Sanchez, just sitting here listening, there's a lot of good ideas out there for you right now. I think that maybe myself and somebody else should have a discussion with you, come up with a game plan. Because this is just for discussion tonight. It's not for approval or making a vote on it. In the meantime, I want, I would like to see what we can do about. I don't know the signs that are out there right now, but is there a sign for what can be put? It's strictly cardboard. I know that. But is there a sign that says strictly cardboard? There is, okay. There's no such thing as an hour sign out there when they can and when they, so they can come up here at two o'clock in the morning and drop something off if they wanted to, right? There's no gates or anything like that. You had mentioned, Jimmy had mentioned gates or fencing it in. John, I I can't agree with you anymore. Being a building owner and having a dumpster out back, I did put a gate up around my dumpster at one point, and I found more refrigerators and tires and trash bags on the outside of it because they couldn't get in. So that wasn't any help to me whatsoever. I took the fencing down. People are going to put in what they put in. I agree with Michael. It's a shame that we even have to have this discussion on dumpsters. It says right on it cardboard only, but people will bring their trash up and do whatever they got to do. So maybe maybe some advertisement to the Burlington Parenting Network, the Facebook page that they have or our own Facebook page. Maybe B C A T could do a small little two second, you know, I'm sorry, five minute little interview with me or someone else on what we're allowed to do with this dumpster fee. Now, see how, see how it goes and then go to the next level of, okay, no one's paying attention to this. Let's talk to the police department. Let's get some really good cameras and let's start finding people if we have to. We they have to realize it's for Burlington residents only. It's not for people from Billerica, Woben, Winchester, Arlington, wherever. It's not. That doesn't mean you can come to work if you live in another town and drop your trash off. Not that anybody's doing that. I don't know. I'm just saying out there. So I think there's some more to be discussed on this. I would be more than happy to sit down with you, John. I know we have a meeting Monday morning on another issue, so if you want to discuss it at that point, I would be more than happy to.
Absolutely.
All right, Mr. Sagorino, any comments or?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here at the building at all sorts of weird times and on the weekends, and I can't tell you how popular that service is. So I would hate for a few bad apples to ruin it for the rest of the residents. You know, we do have information on who some of the people's trash that was left outside was, you know, from mailing labels and whatnot. I don't think that we're going to be in the business of public shaming people at this point, but not all of them are strangers to us at this point. So we are aware of some of the folks who, you know, haven't been following the rules. So the cameras are there, and again, most of these boxes have mailing labels on them that people haven't taken the time to remove either. So and again, I just don't think it's, we're at a point where we want to be public shaming people, but most of them were Burlington residents, to be quite honest with you. And like you say, I I'd hope that we can come up with a way to continue the service. It is wildly popular. Like something I've never seen before. So thank you.
Thank you. I so what? I really don't want to get rid of the program at all, and I really don't want to find anybody. So if you gentlemen have any comments, you can, you know, just email me, and I will meet with John on Monday anyway, and we'll go over it quick. And then the next meeting, Betty will put this back on the agenda for what we think the proper proper way to advance this is. Does that, does everyone agree with that? We'll go from there and see where where it leads us.
Joe, if you're looking for a second person, I'll jump on board if you want.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy. We'll talk after the after the meeting, all right?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, John, thank you for your time and I hope you have some great ideas for us because I really don't want to get rid of the program. And like Paul said, I don't want to shame people either. Put the whole list of everybody on 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 our website. That wouldn't be good. All right, thank you. Thank you, John. Mr. Sagorino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up for the board's consideration, special legislation that we've been working on with Representative Gordon and Senator Friedman's offices since the spring. This legislation, if passed, will give fifty towns which have a large commercial property tax base like Burlington another tool to work with as we enter what we know will be some very difficult years for us financially. We are uncertain as to what the impact on property values will be from the pandemic at this point. This legislation is modeled after legislation that was passed in two thousand and four where there was similar uncertainty in the economy, and it was very useful to Burlington and many other communities at that time. I have been in contact with many other communities that would be willing to support this as well. I'd also like to give a special thank you to Cody Case and Representative Gordon's office, who did a lot of research on this to help fill in the gaps in my memory from when we worked on on this back in the mid two thousands. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board, and I would urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Let's start with Mr. Hogan.
Nothing.
Nothing. Mr. Runyon.
I I really don't have a lot of the details, so I don't really have a question at this time, Joe, only to say that, you know, I I think pursuing, you know, any any relief available to state legislation would certainly be welcome here.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Figgus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, no questions, but if it helps the town, I'm all for it.
Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I agree with something running that, you know, anywhere we can we can create, you know, relief, you know, within the community. And, you know, have a benefit other communities as well. You know, in times like this is is absolutely beneficial. So I'm definitely in support of this.
Okay, thank you. As far as myself goes, like the other gentleman said, anything that's going to help the residents, I think all five of us are in. So Mr. Sagorino, you need a vote on this, right?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I need a motion from let me put the hand up. Somebody want to make
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the special legislation.
Motion by Jimmy, second by
Second.
Mr. Priest, we're going to roll call vote, gentlemen, once again. Mr. Hogan. Mr. Priest, you know, we're gonna roll call vote, gentlemen, once again. Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Runyon.
Yes.
Mr. Tigges.
Yes.
Mr. Priest.
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. So five zero zero in favor. Paul, fantastic job. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, we've had a great, a lot of help from uh, uh Senator and our representative on this and it's obviously has a long way to go, has to make it through the legislature. And again, it's, it's nothing radical. This is something that the state uh provided us as a tool back in two thousand and four and, and we're looking. To have as many tools as possible as, as we deal, uh, you know, with the uh potential financial crisis uh brought on by the pandemic. So thank you very much. I appreciate the support.
Oh, thank you, Paul. Seriously, you guys do a great job for us. Okay, um, we need uh the next one. Town meeting warrant articles, Paul.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, uh, we'd like to ask the board to take uh a position on, on warrant articles for town meeting. Um, I sent out the list to you several weeks ago. Uh, we have some that we would request your vote on. Uh, and also you're perfectly uh able to vote on any that we, that we haven't asked for your vote on as well. So if you want to run through the list. Um, we can talk about what the warrant article is. We have some folks in the meeting uh here as well that can elaborate on some things. Uh, but, you know, we'd be happy to run through those articles for you right now and, and get the board's uh votes uh locked in before we head to town meeting on Monday.
Okay, so what we've done in the past is um, uh, we've gone through the list and Paul, you will read uh the list for us. And if someone wants it on hold, just raise your hand and uh I'll mark it down and that way they will know, or, or just say hold. And we'll go back to that particular article. Other than that, we'll um, we'll discuss those at that time. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, everyone shaking their heads? Fantastic. Go ahead, Mr. Sagorino.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll just give a brief uh overview of each of them as, as, as I say the name. So. Um. Article two. Uh, which is the zoning article, uh, to change the name of Board of Selectment to Select Board in the zoning articles. You guys are well aware of that one. You've already. Uh, approved that to move forward five oh, so we'll move on to the next one. Uh, Article five, a replenished reserve fund. Uh, this is an article that happens every year at our annual town, at annual town meeting in January. And what we do is we take an additional hundred thousand dollars out of our free cash and supplement uh the Ways and Means Reserve Fund. Uh, we've done this every year uh since I've been here over sixteen years and, and well before that. And. Uh, the reason why that's important is if we have an emergency, uh, we can access the Ways and Means Committee uh to access funding to help solve our problem. Uh, it gives us a little bit quicker access uh to problem solving funding. So we trust your support on this one. Uh, the next article uh was Article six, Transportation Infrastructure Fund. Uh, several years ago, uh, with the advent of the rideshare services, um, the state imposed a fee on rides. And ultimately cities and towns get what I believe is twenty percent, uh, twenty cents or something per every ride uh that originates here in town. Uh, that money uh builds up and we receive it uh from the state. It builds up in a fund until we decide uh what to appropriate it for. Uh, at town meeting. And uh, I believe the money has to be done uh, uh expended upon uh items which are impacted by use of the roadways. So. Uh, what the team had come up with this year is for these funds to go towards supporting um. The town's replacement service for the Beeline, uh, you know, the rideshare lift program that has been instituted uh prior to the pandemic. So. Uh, we hope that uh this will get approved to, to fund that initiative for the, for the upcoming year. So if there's any questions on that, we have John, uh, Rachel and Whitney here, uh, if anyone has any questions on that one.
Does anybody want to put that on hold? Oh, Nick does. Nick has a question. Go ahead, Nick. We'll just do it now. Mr. Priest, what was your?
All right. So, so Paul, that six five two five three is going towards the lift program for next year. I'm, I'm hearing that correctly?
Correct.
Okay. Um, so a, as a, as a part of that, is there any way we can hear about how the program's been going? I know we're in a pilot mode. Um, just curious, you know, do we have any data numbers adding on that to understand how it's been faring?
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can have the team in and give a, a full presentation to the board. I think that would be worthwhile. I think there's some residents that may be interested in, in hearing about that as well. Um, as you know, the project kicked in right before the pandemic. So it was a period of time there where folks just weren't putting themselves in close contact like that. Uh, we believe that we got the majority of the folks that regularly ride the Beeline transitioned over to the new program. Uh, the original feedback that we started getting uh at the beginning of this was very positive. Um, residents appreciated the door to door aspect of it. Uh, they appreciated the fact that they could actually take um, take the, the, the ride outside of town, for example, if they had a doctor's appointment in Winchester. Obviously they pick up the additional cost of that, but it just provided them with more options. But we can certainly get the team in here and, and to talk to you. And answer questions, uh, to fully talk about where that program is right now.
That'd be great, Paul. Yeah, I'm just, as, as someone who initially supported it, I'm just curious if we're gonna continue funding it. I just want to see how, you know, it's, even during COVID, just how the numbers are looking.
Yeah, a, a, as you know, there was uh the ridership on the Beeline was very low. So we started from a pretty low number. And uh, we're, we're very hopeful that we got all those riders. We certainly made a lot of outreach to get folks that rode the Beeline transition to the new program. Uh, as you know, because of COVID, we extended the Beeline for an additional six months, uh, just to give more time for people to make the transition. But. We can certainly have on the team come back in and give the board a report on, on how things are going.
Awesome. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next one is a routine transfer as well, uh, to transfer of free cash to the Water Stabilization Fund. Uh, this relates to uh what we've been doing in terms of financing the MWRA project. So. Uh, as you know, that uh, the MWRA project is financed through water uh rate increases. What this article does is we take the money out of free cash from the water rate increases. We set it aside in the Water Stabilization Fund. Uh, and in May, uh, we'll be utilizing those funds that we collected through the water uh rates uh to offset the costs associated with the MWRA project. So. The money goes into the fund in January and we take it out in May. This is pretty much how this works. And uh. Both John Sanchez and Whitney are, are both here also to elaborate further on that if necessary.
Any questions, gentlemen? None. Go right ahead, Paul.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the next up is uh Article eight, uh, which is the next uh request for funding for the MWRA project. Uh, we've talked about this pretty extensively uh over the past several months and in order to keep that project moving forward um as quickly as possible, uh, so that we can get. To um a full uh renewable source of water, uh, this is the next stage of funding. Um, just so that everybody knows, uh, we are. Uh, way ahead of schedule on the timeline and we're still on budget to what uh the original cost of the project was. Uh, when we presented it to meeting, uh, town meeting several, several years ago. And again, we do have uh John Sanchez is here. Uh, to answer any detailed questions you may have in terms of this portion of the funding.
Um, well, uh, go ahead, Michael. Jimmy, I'll get to you right afterwards.
Okay, uh, my only question was, uh, i- i- is this a, a bonding um item?
Uh, yes, it is, Mike. Bonding.
Jimmy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, it's sort of a question for the water. I know um, we have to have a new uh building built on Adam Street. Just uh trying to get the status of the, the uh, their sand pit, the gravel pit up there. Has the tenant vacated?
So we have, uh, Jim, we have uh the contract at ninety percent design. Uh, we are about to send it to DEP for review. So we don't anticipate any issues with the current uh tenant uh as far as our timeline, only because it's gonna take a little longer to. Get it approved by DEP until we actually go to construction. So we anticipate construction probably uh early summer for that building. So um. So uh, we'd really have no issues with uh, with them right now.
Okay, the reason why I ask is because our letter to them stated December thirty first. I'm just curious to see where, where they stood.
Correct. So uh, so we've, we, we just picked uh to them because they had a pile that's still sitting in the back and they asked us for. Uh, an allowance to keep that for the time being. If you look at the site, there was a pile like behind, not real where we're gonna be, but behind built. And, and we, we, we don't have an issue with them doing that uh for now.
Okay, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Paul?
Okay, and I think the last two that we would request a vote on is Articles twelve and thirteen. Uh, Article twelve again is to. Uh, change the name from Board of Selectment to Select Board within the general bylaws. Uh, and Article thirteen is uh to change the name from Board of Selectment to Select Board in the town's uh. Special Act, uh, Chapter six eighty-six of the Acts of nineteen seventy, uh, which will be required to have the state legislature update that one. And that is a piece of legislation that governs our town meeting here in Burlington. So again, three articles, um, all related to the name change as well as the financial articles. And uh, those are the only ones that we would request a vote for the board on. Uh, clearly you could vote on any of them that you wish to uh voice your opinion on those. So.
Gentlemen, anybody want to talk about the name change? So we're over that enough? Uh, nobody's got their hand up, so we are all set. Thank you, Paul. Any more questions? Everybody good with all this? Give me a thumbs up. Okay, we're all good. All right. Thank you. Uh, Paul, I guess we're gonna go right to minutes.
Hold on a second, Mr. Chairman. Can we just get a vote on those?
Oh, yeah, we gotta vote on them. I forgot. I'm sorry.
You can take them as a group or uh maybe have the board members hold if they wanna uh do something different with a vote.
All right. Gentlemen, um, do you want to vote this as a group? Is everyone, everyone shaking their head? Yes. There's no one that wants to separate any articles or uh anything to that degree? No? Okay, so we're gonna make a motion to vote on them as a group. I need a motion from somebody on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make that motion uh that we approve uh Articles uh two, five, six, seven, eight, twelve and thirteen. Uh, as presented by Mr. Sagorino in the uh January warrant, uh.
Thank you. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hogan. Okay, gentlemen, as you know, it's a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. Five zero zero, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna go with the minutes now, gentlemen. I have the dates. November thirtieth and December fourteenth. Um. I'm gonna need a motion from that. If anybody?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the minutes of November thirty to twenty twenty.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Need a roll call vote on that, please, gentlemen. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. You have to excuse me. Um, did we vote the December fourteenth one also just now, right?
Mr. Chairman, if you, if I may, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of December fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Mr. Tigges, roll call vote, gentlemen. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Okay. Five zero zero, Betty. You got them all. Thank you.
I think Nick's child also approved it as well.
Say that again?
I think Nick's child approved it as well.
I think he was saying no. He wants his dinner. Uh, good. Um, Chairman's Report. Uh, tonight, I really didn't prepare anything. Um, so I am going to skip the Chairman's Report. There's no snow to talk about. DPW is doing great. Our um, uh, uh, new facility is coming along just fine. Uh, at some point, I do want to make an appointment with Mr. Sanchez to walk through it on the inside because the outside was great. So other than that. I'm just gonna go to uh reports from everybody and we'll start out with Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to uh say Happy New Year, everybody. Um, hope everyone is having a grand twenty twenty-one thus far. Uh, otherwise, in terms of subcommittee reports, I have nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hogan?
Uh, I have nothing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, from the Fire Department, uh, they'd like to wish Captain Kevin Brown a, a fond farewell. Uh, he just retired after thirty-five years of service. Also, um, the border health has conducted, uh, started conducting first responder COVID vaccinations. Uh, they have five clinics planned over a two week period. They started last week. Um, the Fire Department and myself would like to thank Susan Luminallo for, and her staff for planning and organizing the clinics. Uh, the Fire Department currently has three firefighters in the Mass Fire Academy. Uh, due to the COVID nineteen, the academy is using a hybrid program. Where they attend hands-on training in Stowe and remote learning from Station Two. And finally, uh. Dispatcher Thomas Codwell became a nationally, National Registry Certified Paramedic and Licensed Paramedic in Cromwell. Uh, we'd like to congratulate him for that and uh, he's hoping to join the fight as a firefighter in the, in the future.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Runyon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, some, some news getting to be a regular thing. Our, our, our Community Development Office has been very busy. Throughout the uh, the COVID. Uh, just to quickly update you on the um. A couple of grants that uh Melissa had received and, and has begun distributing. There's a Community Development Block Grant for small businesses. Those are businesses with the. Five uh employees or fewer. We still have some money uh, uh, left in there and applications are available. Uh, there's also a workforce training program. Uh, some funds left in that one for folks who are unemployed or underemployed and would like to take advantage of um, training in uh, in a different field. Uh, and thirdly, there's a uh, uh, there's a community survey, survey available. Uh, Melissa would like as many. Uh, residents to take a few minutes and fill out the survey if they could. Um, I, I know it's, uh, there's a link to the survey on the town website. Um, Brenda posted it uh, uh, on the couple of uh, of the community Facebook website as well. It takes about ten minutes for folks to complete. It would be, it would be real helpful if um, folks would take the time and, and help us out by filling out the survey. Uh, second item, uh, Mr. Chairman, is uh, I'd like to talk very briefly, uh, the Historical Commission. We've got some really great folks on the Historical Commission. They, they work very hard. They're very dedicated uh group of individuals. Um, but they've got their hands full. Um, we've got a, uh, the, the country's two hundred and fiftieth. Uh, anniversary, independence, uh, just, just five years away. Um, it's probably not on, on anybody's radar right now, but it's on their radar. And they've got a long list of uh tasks that they'd like to complete over the next five years and they could use a hand. So if there's anyone. Out there who, who has an interest in, in uh the history of this town and, and would be willing to help or perhaps serve as an alternate. Uh, to the, on the Historical Commission, um, either reach out to myself. I know Selectment Tigges has been working with me uh on this as well. Uh, or anybody from uh the Historical Commission. Uh, it would be a big help to them and we, we encourage folks uh to do so. I know that, you know, um, the uh. That, that website that um, uh, Bob Fahey has put together, uh, the Burlington Retro Village, has a huge following. So I know there's an interest out there in the, in, in the community. Um, I know that there's a, there's a huge interest in, in, in history of this town. So again, if anyone's interested in helping out a little bit, uh, reach out to us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Mr. Sagorino, Town Administrator Report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my first update, I just wanted to give the board a quick update about town meeting on Monday. Uh, thanks to the planning of our moderator and our town clerk, uh, they do a great job with it, but we're looking at a mostly virtual uh town meeting. Uh, they're gonna try to limit the in-person participation uh just to those that may have to speak or present on an article. And also uh those town meeting members that may have uh technology. And also those town meeting members that may have technology challenges, they're making accommodations for them. But for the rest of us, the intention is for us to participate virtually. So you should be getting a link from the town clerk on that. The next item I just wanted to bring up is a couple of years ago when I first started, I think we all worked really hard as a group to get the town submitted into the Green Communities Program with the state. And we have some great news to report. John Sanchez and Rachel Leonardo from Public Works are here to to give you guys an update on how it's been and how well we've done with the Green Communities Program.
So so if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce Rachel Leonardo, who actually has done the brunt of the work when it came to green communities and the programs that we have had. So Rachel, why don't you give us an update on on what we did as a press release and the projects completed in 2020, please?
Well, technically, Rachel Kaplan did those, but I can take the credit. So the big money phrase is that we've done about $1 million worth of projects, but it only cost the town $153,000. We've received a lot of grants and a lot of incentives. You know, big shout out to Rise Engineering, who does a lot of projects for us. They have a great relationship with EverSource and with National Grid, so they're basically the ones who made it possible for us to get all that money. Just those LED lights for the town buildings is about $465,000 that we got absolutely free of charge, which is just incredible. I know the schools got theirs free of charge also. And that's, you know, there's a lot of competitive grants just for lights and it's so awesome that we don't have to apply for that. We also, we just completed the library. We did brand new rooftop units for their HVAC. We did new controls over there. And we weatherized the doors so, you know, we could hold out and heat in in the winter and vice versa in the summer. Fire station headquarters, they just got a big overhaul of their HVAC system. And you all know about our private EV charging station. And then we also did rooftop units for HVAC at 61 Center Street. So lots and lots of projects we've been doing and just improving the town in terms of energy efficiencies.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Just a a big shout out too to our facilities section. They had their hands full this year. We really had so many projects and and most of them were had to be completed by December 31st and the entire division there headed by Frank Anderson came through. I mean, they they have been working literally weekends and sometimes nights, depending on what it takes, so we could get all this done during the calendar year. So the grants could apply and we could get the benefit of of receiving, you know, $850,000 worth of work pretty much for free to the town. So so with that, if you have any questions on it, we we are here to answer it as well.
Well, let me just start by saying it doesn't surprise me that Rachel did the brunt of the work on this. Because there she is once again, going above and beyond what she needs to do, and she is a great employee for the town. Because in the beginning, when I first saw Rachel Leonardo, I had no idea who that was. Like, who is that sitting down there? But anyway, Rachel, I just want to say thank you very much. Congratulations on your marriage. I hope everything's going well. Don't leave us too soon when you're having a baby. Make sure you come back and work for us.
I'll drop the baby off at your barber shop every day.
Say that once again?
I'll drop the baby off at your barber shop every day.
I don't think you'd really want to do that because the kid will be hunting and fishing forever.
Rachel, you might end up here like this, so.
Well, you're gonna end up looking like Jimmy. Seriously, thank you for all your work, Rachel. It's great to have you onboard. Nice to see you again, too. It's been a long time since you've been in one of our meetings. We'll stop. Mr. Priest, any comments?
Obviously, thank you both for all your hard work. You know, taking taking a million dollars worth of of work and making it $100,000 to $2,000 is no small feat. And, you know, it's it's that kind of ingenuity and effort and thinking that, you know, I really appreciate. So keep up the great work. Thank you.
Mr. Hogan? Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, again, thank you and Rachel, thank you. Congratulations. I didn't know you changed your last name also. Congratulations. But you got like Joe and Nick, everybody has said, you guys are stellar. You guys are doing an incredible job for the town and thank you.
Mr. Runyon? You're not tongue tied right now, are you?
No, sir, no, I'm still with you. Again, thank you both. I, you know, I think these these updates that we get from time to time, they're very important. You know, I know the DPW, we've been striving to to save money for for many, many years. You know, swapping over the streetlights to LED is just another example. While I have you here, let me ask you, as long as we're on talking energy savings, the the charging station at Town Hall, is it being utilized? And if so, how often? Do you have data on that?
Yes, I actually sent a report to Paul and we find that I have all the numbers.
Rachel, I don't think you came through well on this on sound. Can you repeat that, please?
All right.
Well, I I don't think that's working. Just for what I know, I mean, we we have had some use, not as much as we'd like to see at the facility. I mean, obviously, with the way we're conducting business in Town Hall, the annex, we we really don't have a lot of people coming into the lots. Although occasionally, we do see people who who will come here just to charge. Because we're part of a network that people can find on their apps. And and every now and then, we'll see somebody who just came to charge and then they leave. But it's it's not as used as much as we'd like to. But we will we will see a probably increase in ones that, you know, we're back to doors open into the buildings.
You're not dropping off cardboard, too, are they? Throw that out there. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Aren't you all set? Paul, are you all set now?
Yep. And again, I just, John, I feel deserved the lion's share of the credit here, but I just want to thank you guys for supporting us and getting into that program. The program that's been around a while and, you know, we wanted to get in and and we had your support to do so. And it's paid dividends for us in savings to the town and also in just energy efficiency, which is a great a great byproduct of the savings. So thank you very much for that. And probably the last thing I just have to say, Mr. Chairman, is we do have a an executive session, so don't everybody disappear. After this meeting, I'm gonna ask Selectment Tigges to read the official motion to get into executive session when you guys are done. And Betty will be sending a different meeting link for you to get into once we conclude this meeting. So we'll look to start up within about five minutes of the close of this one. So thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Old business or new business, anybody? Just raise your hand and I'll go to you. None? Citizens' time? Do we have any callers that we need to answer any questions from Nick or Betty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't see any.
Okay. Nick, we didn't get any. And okay, so I'll need a motion to close this meeting and move on to our executive session meeting. Can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Motion to close this meeting, seconded by Mr. Priest. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, it's a roll call vote. So Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes, but can I just point point out, do we need a separate motion to go into executive session, correct?
Yes, Selectment Tigges, did you read that motion?
I haven't read it yet. I have it right here, though. If you want me to read it now, I can.
Before we adjourn, I think.
Okay, then. Okay. Yes, yes, on the, yes, on the current motion.
Mr. Priest?
So sorry, point of order, I guess, because this current motion is to adjourn. Should we halt this in lieu of having Selectment Tigges read the executive session before we do that?
Absolutely, you're right.
Would you please read the executive session at the bottom of the agenda if somebody has it?
Mr. Chairman, you want me to start?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I apologize.
Okay, pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, the Board of Selectmen will convene to executive session to discuss legal strategy and litigation in the matter of groundwater contamination as an open meeting may have a negative effect on the negotiation position of the public body with the Board of Selectmen adjourning directly from the executive session and not reconvening in open session as authorized by General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21B4.
Thank you. So Paul, should I finish the?